Do we have a motion to open the meeting? John, can you do that for us? I'm still on mute. Can Anthony? Do you go by Anthony or Tony?
Anthony's good.
Anthony, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, John.
Oh, okay. I'm not very technological, but I finally unmuted myself. I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
Do we have a second? Anthony, you can do a second.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we've opened the meeting at 7:05. Is it a vote to make someone a full member for the town?
No.
Is it, or I just, I just do it?
It's your declare, yeah.
Okay, alright, so I'm declaring that Anthony will be a full member for today's meeting.
I'm honored.
And welcome. Alright, so we've, um, there are no chairman's additions or deletions? To my awareness, I don't think if, did Bill have anything that?
Nope, no.
Okay.
I can't find my report. Oh, no.
And, uh, so, um, we were waiting for Jessica. It's 7:05.
Yeah.
But she's not, uh, on yet.
No, she's having troubles, um, connecting, I guess, so.
So why don't we, we'll move on and then we'll, well, when she's able, come on, we'll go back. Alright, so we have meeting minutes from the 9th of August. And I think I'm the only, uh, John, you were there.
Yeah, I, I, I looked through them. I didn't see anything that I found offensive.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 9th?
Still moved.
I'll second that. Um, we'll take a roll call. So, John?
John Page, yes.
Anthony?
Anthony Bavardi here.
And I'll also, say yes. So the minutes have been approved for August 9th. Next, we're running with, we're going through this pretty quickly. Uh, discussion of fees. Is there something in our folder about that?
Yeah, yeah, um, basically,
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, so I put a copy of the application with all the fees on it in the folder. Um, and I just thought, um, if the board had any suggestions on areas that we could increase the fees, then you could just, you know, kind of have a discussion about that. So that's why they're...
Hey, this is, um, do you want to share, uh, share that? If you, do you have capabilities to share?
Yes, yeah, I can do that.
Yes, we can take a look.
Sure. Alright, one moment. Let me just go back here. And here. Okay, so... Okay, so I can share that.
Looks like it's like page two.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Um, Dave, do I have an ability to share?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thanks. Let me play with this here. Share screen. Okay, um, so this is the application right now with the fee structure here. Application fees for variance and for, um, special permits are, um, about, well, they're $300 for variance. This one is for earth, um, removal. $300 for under 7,000 cubic yards and 750 for over.
How do those numbers compare to what they had been, or is this just no change?
Can you hear Beth? I can't hear Beth. Can people hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so Beth, we lost you somehow. Apparently you can hear us. Did your, um, ran out of battery on your headset? It doesn't look like you're on mute either on your system or... I saw something come up on the side of your screen when we lost you, but... Swear the music should come in while we're waiting for technical difficulties.
Beth, try turning your video off. Well, never mind. Turned everything off.
I think she'll be back.
As soon as she comes back, I'll admit her.
Okay, thanks. Uh, but yeah, I was trying to think if this is a change. Um, we may have inch, we may have up, up some of them since they hadn't been changed in years.
Yeah, that was my concern about that.
Yeah. Though I think the variance is the same. I think I remember that. What if I've got a old one? I'll check my ZBA folder, remember, or something.
Here comes Beth now.
Okay.
Hi, it's, uh,
A lot better.
Yeah, I tried to go to my desktop and for some reason, like my desktop doesn't have a microphone, so I'm wondering if that's what might have happened.
Okay.
You know, I'm working on my laptop, but I remoted into my desktop and as soon as I did that, you guys couldn't hear me, so.
Okay.
I apologize. You can, uh, screen share if you're, you know, if you want, or you can, you know. I mean, I can just say that the, the fees haven't been changed in quite some time, um, so...
How big an increase are these, Beth?
They're, they're not. I was showing you the actuals.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah.
I, I don't have any, uh, you know, unless we are really different from other towns in that either are very high or very low, I don't see a reason to change them.
Okay, mm-hmm, okay. Yep.
And is this just advice? Um, are we, do we need to, are we looking for a vote on this or just?
No, just, just a review, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Everyone comfortable with just, it's fine the way it is? No changes? Okay.
At this time, yep.
Yeah. Alright, so, moving on, um, okay, ZBA bylaws discussion.
Oh, good.
You've been waiting for this one?
That's great.
There, there's a few things that I, for, I think most everybody knows, I was the, uh, chair of the Charter Review Committee. And I continue to be because we're still stuck in the legislature. I'm a little concerned if, if we look at the, the Establishment Paragraph, Sections 145 to 63 sub A.
You probably, um, make sure we have the, um, which one, which stock are you looking at?
I'm looking at, it was something in the packet. I'm not, like I said, I'm not very technological. It was like I believe the first, the first line item, I think, in the, uh, in the agenda.
Yeah, let me, let me see what, I think that's the zoning table. I put that in.
Okay, so I see that, um.
Earth excavation. And then I think he's looking at this one, 14563?
14563, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I can, I can try to screen share again, um, but if I lose, you know, if, if you lose me, then just...
I just think in this one especially where we're waiting and my last communication with our senator and our representative indicates that the charter should be on the governor's desk before the end of the year. I just, I, I think we've taken into account the charter, um, although we don't know what charter that's going to be. Um, but there's a sentence that says the board shall adopt rules not inconsistent with the provisions of this bylaw for the conduct of its business. I, I, I think that that needs to include not inconsistent with the provisions of this bylaw, comma, the town charter, comma, and any applicable Commonwealth laws and regulations, um. I, 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 as an attorney, I like to see things as neat and clean as possible.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so I'm sorry, you, what section were you in? I, I apologize. I was trying to find it on the screen.
It, it, zoning Board of Appeals Sections 14563.
Yep.
Establishment. And, and, and the first sentence is fine. I just felt the second sentence, the board shall adopt rules not inconsistent with the provisions of this bylaw, and then to add, comma, uh, the town charter, comma, uh, rules and regulation, or laws and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Ah-ha, okay.
Just, just to, just to make sure that we're tying everything together and, and we don't leave any loopholes for somebody to try to change it down the road.
Okay, I like that.
Can you see my screen right now? Will you see this?
Yes.
Okay, what he's talking about? Would you like me to type that right in or?
Oh, great, yeah, if you capture it, yeah.
Okay, so he...
Anthony, um, you have any thoughts about, about additions?
Uh, I just, wouldn't it just make more sense to not say not inconsistent with the provisions and say consistent with the provisions? Why would we double negative it?
I know.
That's a good, good catch.
I don't know. I look at these all the day for the federal government. I find this stuff all the time. It's really, it doesn't really matter either way. It's just like, um, I don't know, it just stuck out to me. Again, it doesn't really matter, but.
Yeah.
So, we can get rid of the not in the end.
Great, okay, so consistent with the provisions of this bylaw.
Comma, the town charter.
Bylaw, comma, the town charter.
Comma, and the applicable laws and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. See, I gotta do all this stuff since David's not here anymore.
That's right.
Yeah, it's really important.
Alright, let me do a highlight, because I don't know exactly where we are. Consistent is the one we're using.
We're gonna get rid of the not inconsistent.
I wanna, I wanna strike through, but I don't see it, which is weird. Where is my strike?
There it is.
Five will strike through. If you highlight it and just pop.
Okay.
Oh, I can see word, word experts here.
Yeah, this is great. Alright.
Alright, so I wouldn't put a period after Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I would take that out.
Yeah, yeah, period.
For the conduct of its business, okay.
Period.
Shall, shall file said rules, okay, good.
Now, what, what, is this something that we'll need to go to special town meeting to get
This will go, uh, what will happen is it can go to the bylaw review committee.
Right.
As Mr. Page said, he's on the Charter Review Committee, so at this point, the bylaw review committee has convened and they have organized and right now, um, that's what I was gonna mention to the board, uh, if we could. I would be happy to send you all a Word copy of the regulations that the zoning board is the SPGA for, um, and have you go through them and you could edit them, uh, you know, as you can. It's a big task, obviously. You're, you're, uh, you're the SPGA for a number of use permits and, um, you know, so I don't know if that would work. I could keep a, a folder. I'll download all of the code in Word and then you could go through it and as you go through it, you could mark up things that you note or things that maybe you know haven't worked um, in the permitting process perhaps, or things of that nature.
Uh, I think that's a good idea, that people can work on it offline and provide the feedback.
Okay, great, yeah.
Are there other items in this document that we should, you know, that we already know we wanna provide feedback on?
This is interesting, John. Um, in appeals, it, it, uh, 14564, Section 3. I didn't realize that the...
MRPC was involved?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure when that, that probably came into effect after my last term on the ZBA. But maybe that's something to mention to the, as, as we put forth a, a review for the bylaw review committee, maybe just a question about that and see what their thoughts are.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if that came in from state law changes or what, but yeah.
I don't re, like I said, it, it's been a while since I've been on the board, so I don't recall the MS, MRPC getting involved, but I suppose that could have happened.
I know I do have to send them legal notices of public hearings when a bylaw amendment is proposed.
Mm-hmm.
But that's the only time I've been corresponding with MRPC on a level, um, okay. Okay, so again, I will create, um, the, similar to what you're seeing in your folders tonight, that, that folder with the Word documents and I will drop in there, um, everything in Word, so you can go through it, you know, as you want, as you have time. I did put in the earth excavation bylaw, um, zoning bylaw, um, from which the board is, is the, you know, the SPGA for, because we expect to have an application for renewal uh, of that special permit. So I thought probably a good time to review it since that, we're expecting that application to come in, so that's in there too.
Can we go back to the 14563?
Absolutely.
I'm just, I'm rereading the change that we made. The board shall adopt rules consistent with the provisions of this bylaw, the conduct of its business. It, we should be for the conduct of its business. So we, 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 I think deleted a word too much.
Okay.
Um, and then I would, and, and I'm willing to listen to anybody else. I would put a period after business and, um, wait, where was I? The conduct of its business and shall file said rules with the town clerk.
And.
Does that make sense to people?
And shall file said rules with the town clerk.
Been a long day.
And, and then I probably need a, because it also says and shall make said rules available to the public.
So far, and...
Lots of ands.
Yeah, I know, but, uh, that's...
But from a legal perspective, that's, if that's okay.
I think, I think that's okay with it and, and obviously this is just kind of a throw, throw stuff out there and see what sticks. I, I still think that the bylaw review committee isn't, is gonna be a little bit handcuffed until we get a confirmation from the state that we're good to go on the new charter.
I have a really niche question and comment, but it kind of depends on your answer. Do we have, do we have an established, like I see, this is really niche, the, the font you're using, is that like the town? Is that the font we're supposed to use? I only ask because when I write these public facing document, documents, we have to use ADA compliant fonts. And that's not one of them listed, and I was just curious, there was some rule about that. Personally, I'm not, I don't really care, but I was just wondering if...
I think that's a good thing to feed back to the bylaw.
Yeah.
Maybe just to say, you know, something to consider.
Yeah, ADA.
Just something I get harped on by our public affairs team constantly, so it's like drilled into my head.
Yeah. So I'm gonna write this comment as, um, you utilize ADA compliant font for the whole code, right?
Yeah, for it.
The entire code. Right?
And I don't know, if you like, like, for me, like, the government has to abide by Section 508, which is where we get all our fonts, but like, the state of Massachusetts has their own guidelines. I mean, they have like Textum, Montserratian Calibre and Source Code Pro. I have it open in front of me because I wasn't sure if the state had something, but, um, I don't know. I don't know what level it would really matter. It's just, like I said, it was kind of a niche thing that stuck out to me.
But that might be a good thing to throw to the bylaw review committee.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, that's great. Just like these meetings, you know, in my opinion, should be ADA compliant for hearing impaired, public, you know, it's different languages. Um, right now, if I were to, you know, if someone were in need of a special services, they would, they would certainly by right be able to contact me, but I'm not sure that everyone knows that, you know, so I'd like the process to be very clear that, you know, if you have a hearing impediment or, uh, any sort of disability, you should be able to join in a public meeting. Um, but, so this is a great start. And I'm not seeing...
Jennifer?
Jessica, no, she's in a lot of trouble.
Hey, we can, alright, so is there anything else you want to talk about on the bylaws? Are we wrapping up from there?
Yeah, that would be it. And, uh, again, I'll, I'll make sure I send you that folder with all the other stuff.
Alright, so why don't we move to, uh, administrator's report?
Okay, let me see where I can find that. Just when I lost everything last time. Yeah, so Ginger, Jessica sends her apologies. She is having a hard time, um, because she was the main attraction.
We may, well, maybe it's good if we reschedule if, um, which, yeah, yeah. Bill could be here too, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So that would be great. Okay, so I will run through this. Um, I've been doing administrative reports, um, as uh, sort of a new thing for the board and if you have any questions, just let me know, um, just kind of what we've been doing in the department. We do, um, building permit, interpart, interdepartmental approvals and I've signed off, um, for 152 North End Road, construction of a barn using the existing foundation. Um, I've uploaded other decisions associated with that into the database. And Anthony, so you know, this is a new database we're using, um, in the town and we're populating it as different projects come into the building department. Um, so the next one's 81 Turnpike Road, removal of a existing side deck and construction of a new one and construction of a mudroom attached to the house and replacement of the front door. Uh, 3 Saunders Road, adding a two-car, two-story garage, um, attached to the house and the second story is unfinished. And then on 14 Blood Road, there's the addition of a 12 by 20 carport. As far as applications and compliance, uh, some of the things that we are seeing, um, we, the ZBA does have an application for a renewal of an accessory apartment and I have gone ahead and scheduled that public hearing for December 6th at 7:10 PM. I hope that works for everybody, um, so that, please mark your calendars and let me know if you have a conflict. That's a Wednesday night.
What was the, what was the date again?
December 6th.
December 6th, okay.
Yep. And, um, if the board would like to, you know, have a hybrid meeting, I certainly, you know, I think it's working well as it is, but just you can have that discussion when the chair is present. For 22 Main Street, um, you might be seeing some activity there. Um, their construction schedule has been updating, has been updated and the planning board did extend the timeline for completion. Um, the things are happening out there. Uh, the board did grant the variance for the project, so I'm just updating you on that.
And is 22 Main Street is the best friends?
Yeah, yeah, things are moving along.
Yeah, good, good. It's, it's taken a little bit, but I'm glad to see it.
Yes, yes, so, uh, 3 Wheeler Road is the, um, application that we're expecting. It's for renewal of the expired earth excavation permit and we have heard from the owners that's, that the engineer is preparing that. Um, and I have sent renewal letters. Um, they went out to the permit holders of expired accessory apartment special permits. Um, I sent out five of them and, um, just recently, and so that's, that's why we got the, uh, application for Lunenburg Road and that. Not, um, oh, there is, uh, a great, uh, training opportunity. It's called the, um, the Citizens Planner Training Collaborative and there are fall workshops that have been announced and, um, I think I'll send you out an email. I don't think I put it in your packets, but there are 11 classes. They're all online. Um, various nights of the week, uh, that usually start around 5:30 or 6:00. Various different, um, topics, zoning with overlay districts, um, special permits and variances, our roles and responsibilities of ZBA and planning board members. Um, a lot of really great information, um, really good for both staff and board members, so I'll send that over. And since Jessica hasn't joined us, I'm going to go ahead with the MBTA Communities Compliance, um, uh, update. And currently, we've been working with our, partnering with MRPC, our planning commission and down-selected, um, a couple of overlay districts to, um, I think you got the update that they've been down-selected to the Fitchburg Road area. I'm trying to remember the last update. Did we, did we talk about that to?
Oh, it doesn't sound familiar to me.
No, okay, so I can pull up that map, but we have been working and down-selecting the areas. So we have three, um, potential feasible multifamily overlay districts, uh, selected and we'll be, um, doing more public outreach on that. And we do have a draft multifamily, um, overlay district bylaw, uh, that is, is coming together. Um, so for public outreach on that, we're planning a presentation at the Fall Town Meeting. It's on the warrant, um, and you can see at the end of the Fall Town Meeting, there will be a presentation to the town on the MBTA Communities Law and our planning process. Um, so we're coming up to speed. We're looking really good, um, and getting that done well ahead of a lot of our communities, so it's kind of nice. Uh, so, um, yep, we do.
Yeah, it's, it's important to do that because, uh, sometimes it takes us a couple of times going through town meeting before we'll feel comfortable enough. I mean, I remember it took a long time for us to get the library going.
Yeah, it's a very complicated law too, uh, for zoning. It, it, it's very, there's a lot of moving parts and it's not exactly custom fit for small towns without municipal sewer, so that's great. Um, we're getting a lot done there and, uh, we do have a new hire in the land use office. Her name is Allison Westessi and she is the new housing and grant administrator. We're getting a lot of applications going for grants. Um, it's really a great time to work in land use. We also have a senior workoff, um, person helping us in organizing the files. Um, moving on, uh, as you heard, David Funioli has tendered his resignation as a full member of the ZBA and now... And now the Board is looking to fill one full member and two associate member vacancies, and they are posted. Um, beyond that, I, I just, that's about it. So that's what I have. Thanks.
Alright, so, uh, will you follow up with Jessica and reschedule to a future meeting?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Not a problem. So with that, we've, uh, gone through our agenda. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Oh, did you want to vote on those minutes or no?
We did, didn't we?
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, we.
Oh, we did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
August 9th, yep.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we did that at the beginning. God, we were waiting. We were hoping Jessica was going to be here.
Okay, thank you. Great.
We'll be, uh, meeting at June at 7:35 PM.
Anthony would like a second?
Second.
I'll do the roll call. Uh, John?
John, yes.
Anthony?
Uh, Anthony, yes.
And Vicky, yes. So, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in, uh, December.